Good morning, everyone. The one's online. We'll start with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anything to add to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Cherry, I'd like to add after our closed session, a item, once we open the meeting and then add an item, compensation salary study and wages. In addition, on the consent agenda, the Red River Basin Commission bill is on there. I'd asked Commissioner Nelson if he could just give a quick, just for educational purposes, to the board, since he sits on that, if that's okay.
Yeah.
Thing else?
No.
Motion to concur, change this agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the changes of the agenda and approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Motion by David, second by Erica. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Minutes of the April sixteenth meeting, any corrections?
I had a couple. Just wanted to make note, and under my reports, I also gave a report for senior counsel, but that wasn't on there. And then on page... Under the Fraser Economic Development, I think we should put on there that that there was the request for funding by Cornerstone and Wanigan, and that the funding was denied for Cornerstone, and then I was appointed to their board. And then I think we should just note that we discussed Wanigan. I don't remember what... I think we told them what funding was available for them, but...
Wanigan, we referred to the sales tax money.
Yeah.
Yeah, that will come forward in December at the public hearing, get that listed.
Yeah.
Yep.
It was the... Yeah, Cornerstone was not, I don't know, it wasn't...
They requested...
They requested, and the board was not receptive.
Yeah, I don't see, I don't see denied, just not receptive, yeah. Yeah.
Was not, was not, did not take action to move this forward. Maybe that's...
That's probably a better word.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was all I had. Oh, one other thing. The, on here, it says the next White Earth meeting, the wee meeting, was going to be March twenty-fifth, but under the reports, it should be April twenty-fifth.
Sorry, saw that too.
That's the one I had. And I have none.
You have nothing else?
No. Took my thunder away, I think.
None. Motion to approve the minutes of April sixteenth as corrected?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with the corrections.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Through the discussion? Hearing, and all in favor, say aye.
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 Moving on the consent agenda, anything? Want to poll, or?
Did you want me to just, did you just want me to?
To touch base on the...
Yeah, I was just hoping you could just...
So, we're a member, we're a member of the Red River Basin Commission. What that, what that is, you know, we just meet quarterly and discuss... It's, we make an appointment to the Red Board, not to the Red Board, the Red River Basin Commission. So, we have a voting, so this group has a voting. It goes from Stevens all the way up to Kitson. I mean, it's a huge area. We used to meet in Monoman County, but now we meet in, up at Fargo at their, at their office. It's not, it's, the meetings just usually discuss what projects, and we try to limit it to water projects, but we all have discussions about what's going on in all the counties, which is good. But basically, it's our representation to the Basin Board, so.
And that annual charge was five ninety-nine or something like that?
Yes, yes. There was a bill in here, so is that just for, like, membership, or?
I suppose.
Okay.
And they've come here before and spoke. They've had some turnover, but now they're pretty stable. That was the group that, remember, we invited you to go out to Buck's Mills, and that's when Nick was here, and we, then they stopped and bought lunch at The Brew. It was very poorly attended, very poorly attended, from our board, you know, and I don't think anyone from our, from, from the Basin Commission, the Joint Powers Board, it wasn't very well attended, and I don't think, I was the only one from here that went, so. It's, it's not a real, I mean, we're not real active. We don't do much, except for that appointment on the board, so. And information.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. Anything else, questions? Not, a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent.
Motion by Erica.
I'll second.
Through the discussion?
There was a question I had in the transit, just a quick question, but it did, did anything major change in there? It just looked like, I read some of that wording.
Increase?
Yeah.
It had to do with more of the chassis went up some, but a lot of the optional equipment that went in there went...
But there's no major change in the state owning this instead of, I mean, I just, there was a phrase in there that struck me as odd.
No, on the bus?
No, well, it was on the agreement that it was a state, state running it now, rather than county, or... I just, and just how I read it, I can't, I was like, is that, that's no major, it was, didn't change anything.
I don't see it, nothing changed. On the bus, it was just the increase in prices.
Just the increase in price, yeah.
Allowed, and we adopted them, we still pay the ten percent.
Yeah, it was more of the...
The state did state they increased the amount so that they would be covered.
As long as there was no, I mean, I'm sure it was probably standard language, and I just, when I read it, it was like... So, I was just gonna ask, make sure there was no change in...
Yeah, I don't recall anything changing.
Ownership of the...
No.
Is the transit building on consent?
Okay, so I, I'll...
Yeah, it's four B.
Yeah, that, Kevin is gonna check, once we pay what the fifty-two thousand. Okay, were, are they taking off the title completely, or how, so there's a little clarification there before...
Maybe.
Make the final.
Yeah, I was just making sure that there was no significant change in how we're running transit.
No.
No.
Thing else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thanks. Open forum. Anybody on there, Nate? Nothing to say, Jerry?
Everything fine.
Reports and correspondence.
I'll, I can go first. So, I had a DAC meeting, and they are doing some improvements to the building. Inside, they're, they had that fundraiser a few months ago to fundraise money for their sensory room, so that's going pretty good. She's got, our executive director's doing a lot of stuff on that. She started painting some stuff herself, and then realized that she wasn't a painter, so they had, she had to hire a painter to do it. So, but they painted, they're also doing, then the commons area, they've painted all the walls. There's a Madison Blayhut, who's a student at TruLakes High School, is doing her capstone project on, and she's going to build, I believe, eight, six or eight garden, like, raised up garden platforms, and they're going to have flowers and bushes and stuff in them, and it's gonna dress up the front of the building, so it should look pretty good. So, that's, that's pretty cool. And anyway, that, that new, that article about Madison and her doing all this stuff and some of the sensory room things and all this was in the newspaper, and so it's, they've been getting some good publicity for the DAC, so it's really been good. The DAC is looking up, I would have to say. John, I didn't have a transit meeting, but Kevin gave us some updates on riderships, and so riderships have been up ten and a half percent in March. April's trending to twelve percent. And the building is going to be, we just, you know, it's going to be deposed up, so we're going to take ownership of that. Barry, you were gonna check on, were you gonna, who knew, Kevin was gonna check, was you, you were Kevin gonna check on if, what, what that's gonna look like for the deed and stuff? Or was Kevin gonna do that? Yeah, he was gonna talk to the, because there's a new guy at the state, and he wasn't sure if he knew exactly what, how that would look, but yeah. Do you have anything else, John?
No.
We also, John, I also had Heartland Trail meeting.
So, do we have a timeline on the, on the transit building down the fairgrounds?
Well, for, for usage? For...
For ownership of it?
Oh.
So, I mean, just, just thinking, are we going to be looking at transitioning, I mean, it'd be nice to know the timeline, so if we are looking at working with the fair, and I think if we have offices there, is where I think that we're maybe looking at, but we'll need to look at that a little bit deeper before we make any commitment. But it'd be nice to know when that ownership is, so.
I would think once the payment is submitted, cleared from the MNDOT, it should be the colonies, and Kevin's, like I said, was looking into...
I don't think it's rushed, because, you know, just looking at the sheriff's needs, dive and rescues in the back of that building too, so if we do go forward, you know, it'd be nice to liquidate that whole, both buildings, impound and that building, and then all the land behind it.
Extension is.
Yeah, where extension is. I mean, we're, I mean, this is a couple of years out, but I think that all, it all works together, because if we can vacate, if dive rescue gets another home, then we can vacate that whole building pretty easily, so.
Yep. So, we also had Heartland Trail meeting, and we talked about the route from Fraser, to Fraser. So, it should be a goal. There's a few, there's a couple of other things, there are a couple of things they have to do. They have to get the master plan ready and submit it and so forth. But anyway, the acquisition of the wetland agreement should be signed by the end of this month. So, that's, that really took a couple of years to do that. So, anyway, it should be good. And then Clay County is doing a study from Moorhead to Lake Park, or the county line, and they are looking at how the trail could run through there, and then we're also looking, we have to, then we have to decide how we wanna go from Detroit Lakes to Clay County. Do we wanna go through Ottoman, do we wanna go down through Corman Run? We just have, we have three options that we've, that they have looked at and sort of plotted out. So, we just have to determine how we wanna do that. So, that's the next process.
Yeah, just a comment, if you went down through Corman area, they'd also, like, spurs going to Ottoman. Especially Ottoman, and up to Lake Park and...
Yeah, because we don't wanna exclude Ottoman from that.
Well, ideally, it'd be nice to go through the lakes area, but realistically, it's, it's, it's not, wouldn't be a very enjoyable ride, because you're gonna be riding and through, you know, it's just too packed in there. It's just too congested for another, a bike trail. I just don't see how it, I mean, I'd love it to go through there, but I just don't see where you could possibly find enough room for, put a bike trail on.
Back when we did the master trail plan years ago, there was some alternate routes that went down through there. Nothing's really set, it's just possibilities of there, staying along the Highway Ten corridor, dropping down west out of Detroit Lakes here.
If the railroad was easy to work with, the railroad has huge tracks of, you know, a huge swath there. I mean, it's, they got a lot of land. You could be on the edge of that, and they'd never know it, but you'd have to chart, you'd have to say you'd pay for everything that ever happened to anything to get that. If you just went along the railroad, that'd be a, a nice run.
Just, Dan, Dave was saying there, on the Heartland Trail from the bridge in the Fraser, the estimate is right around a million dollars to complete that stretch, and I think we have about one point seven million in funds.
Think so, yeah, yeah.
So, we got plenty of money to do that and probably do some other stuff.
Yeah, we could do, they could add some stuff to the trail that qualify for the bonding and then, or, I think, couldn't they use it for... It has to be used for that trail, though. It can't be used for...
Could be used for access points.
Access points, yeah, yeah, yeah. But you couldn't make bathrooms like a little ways away, because it's not actually on, on the trail. And John, I also had a fair board meeting. So, they are going to, they approved to purchase a handicap set of bleachers that will go on the northeast side. They also approved to move the two good bleachers they have on the south side to the edges of the north bleachers, so there won't be any bleachers on the south side, and then they're going to rent, for the fair, they're going to rent some portable bleachers for the fair, for the south side of the fair. They wanted to move those other two, because they wanted to just have nothing there, so that it would be easy to put the portable bleachers in. So, that's a, that's kind of a, the south end is kind of a temporary fix. You know, it could be a extended temporary fix, but it's a, it's an option that they discovered, because the rental of the, of the bleachers isn't, isn't outrageous. It's not, it's not a crazy amount. But they are gonna spend a lot of money on, on the other bleachers, so. But it's gonna be nice. They need, it's, it's, it's an area they identified as a definite need in the bleach, because the bleachers were starting to, especially on the south end, and then they're gonna just have them dismantled, and I don't remember who he said was coming in to take them apart, but they're gonna get some money off of that too, so. They're also going to level out the BMX track, so they were working on that, getting that, they're gonna get that started as soon as possible. There's a, they might find some interesting stuff under the ground, according to the BMX lady, so they don't know. Well, they said they filled it with some stuff, so. It could be an interesting, yeah, they didn't know that. Then they're also going, for the fair this year, they're going to have a fifty-fifty fairlong raffle. They're gonna sell a thousand tickets for twenty dollars apiece, and then they're gonna have fifty percent of the monies is going to go towards prizes, and it's gonna be a fairlong one. It's not gonna be anything like they've had before. They're gonna s...
Like the event one?
Yeah, they're gonna sell, they're gonna sell tickets at the fair board office, and then they're gonna run it for the whole fair.
They having the buttons still?
They're gonna have the buttons, yeah, yeah. Well, yeah, they, some people, some of those people buy like a hundred buttons at a time, so. Yeah. Do you have any also, John, or not?
No, I could prove it, probably.
And then, John, I also had a recre, we spent a lot of time together. We had a recreation advisory committee meeting, and we, the main, the main course of the meeting was to talk about the Toad Mountain acquisition. And I think that was brought to MRM too, wasn't it? That's, or what?
NRM?
NRM, yeah, not MRM. Not the Minnesota, no, no.
Yeah, we touched base on it, and then I got a, I forwarded Carrie an email that I received from someone, and she was gonna forward it to Steve. It sounds, it sounds like someone may have a first right of refusal on that property.
Oh, okay.
But that, I just, I CC'd Carrie and gave it to Steve, because they had some questions, and I said, we're actually not purchasers, so you'll have to work with them to...
Yeah, the, the group just purchasing, Nick Banks was there and gave a presentation, and he didn't, probably wasn't aware of it.
He probably didn't, wasn't aware of that, yeah. Yeah, the, what is it, the Trust for Public Land is the name of the company. Yeah, so anyway, there, if we do purchase, you know, they, they're, they do purchase it, and we wanna purchase from them, there are three grants that we would apply for that would pay for the purchase of it. But there is some, there is some cost for us. In order to get these grants, we have to have a master plan for Toad Mountain completed. My, what was the date, January, was it January twenty-five, I think? And that's a cost, and then we also have to pay the interest on the loan toward, to that company for the two, or is it, I think it's, did we turn over in two years, we'd have to pay the interest also. So, that's also a cost, so we...
I, I think we should ask the DNR to, to help pay for that interest, or else, you know, because they were, if this is gonna go in public lands, if we don't, if we didn't want it, then they were gonna ask the DNR if they'd be interested. So, I think the owners want it, would prefer it county, but I'm at a point where if we're gonna be spending quarter million dollars, and if it's us or DNR, maybe the, maybe it's better fit for the DNR.
Yeah.
I mean, if it's gonna be, I just, I just worry that that two-hundred-and-fifty thousand will deplete our funds to a point where, where we're not being able to do other projects.
Yes.
But that's a lot, that's a lot of interest money, and if the DNR would maybe cost share with it, then it would, then it would be less burdensome for us. And if they got it, they'd be paying it all, so maybe if we split it and work together, it might be more beneficial. But two-hundred-and-fifty, just, and hope, and hope we get the grants is, is very concerning to me.
Yeah, I, I feel the same way about that. That's a lot of money.
I, I agree with you on that.
If we are locked in on the grants, if we're for sure getting the grants, then it's one thing, but if we're hoping to get, to commit to that kind of money is...
And the understanding I had with the grants, if, if we're denied, then they can pull out of the purchase.
It's contingent on the...
Yeah. Yeah, and then we, yeah, yeah, but we have to, we, the one thing we would have to do, we'd have to commit to that plan, and that's an expense too. That's a...
How much is that? We don't know.
Well, fifty-five to seventy-five thousand, yeah.
And that's a plan to show what we're going to do with it?
Yes, yeah. That's, so, yeah, so there is a, there is a thought, there's a thought process and a cost process, yeah.
At the end of the day, even if we spent two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, it'd be ten percent of the value.
Yes.
So, it's, it's...
Always said, make a great gravel pit.
Yeah.
I threw that out that day.
You know, I think, I think I've always, I always say that it's, the gravel is very valuable, and if there's, it's, it's not out of the question that, that you shouldn't mine gravel if it's there and then, then make the project. It's, so, it's something to look at. If there is significant gravel there.
Maybe we could incorporate it into a rock climbing wall. No, I'd like to, I'd like to see some of that come out of there, too.
Yep. Then, we also talked about primitive campsites at Chilton Park. We did find out some information. You can't just put a primitive site out. You have to have a water source that can own, that cannot, cannot be more than four hundred feet away from the furthest site. So, if you have like four sites in a row, the water source cannot be four hundred feet away from, the furthest site away from it, if that makes any sense. And then there also has to be toilet facilities within four hundred feet also, so. Which, which right now, there, we do put porta potties out there, so that would work, but...
What is the water supply?
Well, so, yeah.
Clean water?
Well, it says a water supply that meets Minnesota Department of Health requirements. And I don't, and I don't, I don't really know what that is. I didn't look that up.
You know, the other thing we could do is, is not have campsites. We could just have rest stops. Clear some rest areas for them, and, and we, as it is now, anybody can go on this land and spend the night, anywhere.
Yeah.
So, we could just not advertise it as overnight camping and let them camp there if they want, I don't know.
Well, I wonder what they're doing on that North Country Trail. Do you think they got water at all them spot?
There's no...
Sluice.
So, that's what I mean, that they don't advertise that they have overnight facilities.
They can just stay.
They just stay there, bring it, bring it, pack in, pack out, you know? And that's what, maybe that's what we, don't advertise it as campsites, is that there's clearing spot for you to rest at. And then we don't have, I mean, I think you should have porta potties out there, but, you know, I don't know how you get, I don't know what water, you know, what attic of water.
Yeah, and then you gotta pump them out, you know, but you'd have to get a truck in there.
Yeah.
You could just, I mean, you wouldn't have to follow the four-hundred-foot rule. You could have them strategically, you know, sell a few, you know. I'm a farmer, I know where, where you can go to bathrooms and...
Well, yeah.
You just watch out for deer cameras.
And, and so, right now, we're also, the RAC committee is also in the process of scheduling a morning tour, so that we can go out there and look and see, you know, what possibilities there could be, you know. And then the last thing I had was the Dunlop shelter. They're gonna, they've got plan, we got plans now to change, to move it to a different spot, so it's gonna be directly east of the old shelter, and it's gonna face the other, it's gonna, instead of facing, it's gonna face the other direction. I mean, it's gonna still face the, the water.
It's gonna do a ninety-degree turn.
Ninety-degree turn, yeah. And, and then they're gonna build that shelter there, and then when that one is done, then they're gonna tear the other one down. And then the parking lot is going to be larger also because of that, and they'll just have to move the trail a little bit from, coming, coming from Highway fifty-nine down. Just have to move it a little bit, which is no big deal. And then we don't have to get rid of that watershed building right away, because the parking will be adequate to maybe to start out with. If eventually we can do, you know, work on that, and then that can be overflow parking or something like that. So, that, that seemed like a good plan to do, anyway. Boy, I think I had, well, I had, Barry and I had a sheriff's meeting too. Except I don't know where my notes are.
We had purchasing a snowmobile.
Yeah.
Upstate contract.
Yep.
We discussed, we discussed, at one of the meetings, we discussed the future expansion, or future...
Yep.
How, how to move forward with, I think it was a combination. We, we kinda went, I kinda went in there with the thinking of just a, of a one building for, for, what's the building's name? Confiscated item.
Impound lot?
Yeah, just, just putting an impound lot out there and looking at the, at the study. Klein McCarthy was there, and they, they looked at it, and the, we had quite a discussion on what, what the needs are, what, what should be in the same building, you know, if, and then you started looking, should dispatch, are you gonna do it? Or is the whole, you're gonna have one big building, or, you know, is dispatch and impound? So, some of those things should be in the same building, but, you know, there was, then there's discussions, well, a lot of it wouldn't necessarily need to be attached. Evidence stuff obviously would. You'd wanna have an area for, if you have a crime scene on a car where you can put it inside and, and, you know, petition it off. So, a lot of discussion. I think, I think we were looking at mostly in one building, but then you could have a second building for kind of your extra squads and extra, you know, more, less, more of a, and I said pole building, but the, the space needs... The, the space needs looked at, I mean, he looked at a lot of stuff and how, how big area, and the price tag for everything, I, I hate to throw this out there, but if we move dispatch, if we had the impound lot there. And with all the square footage, and then probation would like to, would be willing to move over there too, and, and I said, well, if that cash flows, so we can make that, so it's not in excess, um, that would, that would work too. But I think he was looking in that seven million dollar range for that whole, for that whole structure. We do have, we do have the bond coming, paying in full on the court, old, uh, the courts building, so that will be coming up, that's about a five-hundred-thousand-dollar payment. If you, if you go on a seven-year payment or a twenty-year payment, I didn't, I did the math, but it's about a five-hundred-thousand-dollar payment on your bond if you do that. I can't remember if I did twenty years, but, so it wouldn't really, I mean, it wouldn't ra, that would come off and this would go on if that was the route anyone wanted to go.
Yeah.
Of course, you know, then we could, the impound building and the extension building, that, that whole camp, you know, there's two buildings there and a lot of backlot there that could, that could be liquidated. The next step would be remodel this whole building, um, for, for human services, if, if it's possible. Now that, I think that needs to be done, a space study needs to be looked at for what human services needs for their footprint, how many offices, and, and if we have enough room here to even do it. So it, it was a pretty good opening conversation on it.
Yeah.
I think room and parking would be the other, the other issue with human services coming over here is where would everybody park?
Yeah, I think a lot of it would, you know, a lot of it would have to be, what's our work from home policy?
Mm-hmm.
Um, where are we with that, what are we gonna do? Um, but then, obviously, if, if that did work, then that whole human service building would be liquidated also.
I mean, it makes sense, if, especially if a large chunk of them are gonna continue to work from home. It, it does seem silly to have a huge building over there that's.
The other thing is DMV, I mean, we've talked about moving DMV over to the mall, because the mall would really like a, a destination, something in the mall to bring people in. That, that could be another scenario, so this, this office space here would be open for, I mean, that's, we're talking really speculative, you know, but. I think it's something we, we continue to look at and, um, you know, I wasn't really sold on, on a lot of the impound lot being connected to the same, same structure, and I mean, this would all be connected to the current, um. Jail and, and how it, where, where it would fit, we did have room for an expansion of the jail, now we don't anticipate that being needed, hopefully ever, but, um, so we have, we have the footprint available for, and we think we have it covered for, you know, water retention too, for, for the requirements of that. Being we have that extra parcel planned, so.
Well, I think there was design for that.
Yeah, it was, we did plan for that, so, um, so there's a lot of things, um, what's, I can't remember his name from Klein McCarthy, uh.
Scott.
Scott. He, he gave a real good presentation and, and was very open about what it would cost, I think with the probation, I think what the cost would be there, and, and we'd have to look and make sure that, um, that was pretty close to cash flowing, if we had added that, and that was including, um, their offices, and I think they, they, that portion of it was about a, about a million.
About a million, yeah.
And for all their offices, but the, the synergies and would, would work well within the office, I think, and I think our, our working relationship with the state in that area are really good, so.
Yeah, and it, and it would make total sense to have probation out there too, I mean, that.
So it's, um, I think they sold me on it a little bit.
I got sold too.
On, on the benefits and, and the needs, um, so Todd, you got anything to add to that discussion? It's, um, it, um, I, again, I was not, I was not on the same page when I went into the meeting and, and coming out of it and.
Yeah, I.
It, it might be something that, you know, if the board wants, or John, maybe you want the whole board to hear, hear that presentation, the needs and the, um, and how, the benefits, how it would go, I, I think it would be, I think that'd be worthwhile for the whole board to be, I mean, if everyone, if we're on the same page, then we can, right now, we're kinda in that.
Might be something we have Scott over here later.
But, you know, we hadn't been working on that impound building for, for a long, long time and it, it, it just.
It's just been put on hold.
But the guy, it's, it's, uh.
So we got the study done, we didn't wanna move forward.
Yeah, but he showed a couple of options with place, placement of the building and, and, uh.
Yeah.
I think it's, I think it's a good thing to, for the whole board to look at and see if we're, if this is a direction we wanna go.
Commissioner, do you think you would want to bring that to the full board or, and/or, or wait with regards to the study with the human services all in conjunction with that? Loaded question. The big picture is what I'm thinking, or maybe you wanna do it in parts?
I think, I think if this part, I think this part, um, should be, should be done, cause we have to move, we have to get, we have to do something with impound, I mean, this is, we've just been kicking this can down the road far too long, and we are at a point where we have to do something, so.
Maybe do it in parts?
I think we'd look at this part, um, I think maybe just ask the square, you know, I, was, was Scott gonna look at square footage on what's up here and the highway service or the human service needs? So, I mean, he was gonna do a little bit of homework on that and seeing if.
Just to kinda see if it would.
See if there's any possibility, but.
Okay.
Um, then we have to go to, you know, see how, I mean, again, these office spaces are built different now than they were, they're just, it's more of a, you know, workstations than, I mean.
Especially for work from home, might look.
For people coming in.
They have now.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they wouldn't have their own little cubicle, they'd be a office.
So I mean, that, that might be something that, that, uh, human services look at, seeing what their needs are in the future and, you know, and we could always, I mean, you could always take, separate. And, you know, community health, you know, say, if we can't all fit at this time, you could maybe take community health and put, um, in another building that.
Mm-hmm.
I, I don't know, just.
Looking at. We have our human services meeting tomorrow, so we can.
I mean, it's just something that we need to.
Visit a little bit about it.
Grasp the whole thing, here, you know, it's, but, anyway, that, and that wouldn't happen, that wouldn't have to, have to happen anytime, you know, within any timeframe, this.
Yeah.
I mean, that would be, you're talking three, four years before human services has to do anything. I mean, a couple of years maybe before we have a plan, but.
Sure, okay.
Do you have anything else? I got one more, I went to the AMC, MCIT, uh, cybersecurity, um, like mini-conference, and I learned a whole bunch of stuff. I'm not gonna go through everything I learned, but I didn't know a lot of stuff about cybersecurity, and, um, we, Judy does a great job for us, she's doing as much as she can to keep us, uh, keep us ahead of things and, and I, that's great, that's awesome. So I think we're, we're, she's, she, and she, and it's a continual process, if you can't do one thing and say, okay, we're good, it's not that way, it changes all the time. The, we, we could be, we could be, uh, threat-free today, and this afternoon, we could have thirty thousand threats from Russia, I mean, it's just, it's just amazing. And the biggest, the biggest issue is the human element of cybersecurity. Somebody opening up an email they shouldn't opened up, somebody.
Clicking links.
Click on links you shouldn't click on, um, so that's the, those are probably the biggest ways that places get in, is, 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 is things like that, so the human element, training the humans of the, of the, of the county or the companies are, are the biggest things. And it's not just an IT-driven, um, idea, it's gotta be a whole, everybody's gotta take, take part, take ownership and, and make sure that their employees and their, their departments are doing the things that Judy says and, and doing them the right way. Because you, if we get drilled or attacked, or we get a breach, and we get a ransomware, ransomware would be, uh, somebody held our data for ransom, that's bad, and it could cost a lot of money. Um, and if you don't do it, it could even be worse sometimes, so, but MCIT will work with us if we ever get attacked, they will, uh, they have an attorney that will come in right away, then they hire this company, then this, we, MCIT works with a company called Silent. And they are the ones that will come in and, and do as whatever they can, that if you catch it right away, you may be able to stop it right away, um, or, or whatever, so. And they basically said that it's not, if, if you don't have multi-factor authentication, which we do, it's not a matter of when you will get, it's not a matter of if you will get attacked, it's when. And that's the best, probably one of the biggest things, multi-factor authentication, to, uh, help prevent as much as possible. But there's some horror stories about counties that have been attacked.
But we've been attacked twice.
Yes, yeah. There's a county, there, I got one more, there was a county in Wisconsin, the, 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 the MCIT attorney stated that they're held for ransomware, and I don't remember what the price was, but they refused to pay, and it cost them, ended up costing them thirty million dollars to restructure everything.
That's crazy.
That's scary, yeah, so it, it's a, it's a scary thing that, but I, like I said, Judy does everything she can to keep us.
No, she doesn't, she only does what we allow her to.
That's, that's true.
She would, she would set up a firewall for us that.
Yeah, you're right.
We had unlimited funds, but everything costs money, so I think the balance, you have to balance the.
That's what they talked about, the balance of spending money and how much, you know, and, and, and what security you have to, to work with by spending the money, that, you have to have that balance, cause if you just spend on everything, then you have nothing else to spend on anything else, so. Yep, I'm done.
Yeah, I can go next, um, we had EDA, we discussed the childcare grant, which we will talk about later in the meeting, and then we had an overview of our Section Eight housing program, um, so it was really interesting to learn about them. One thing that we do have, um, in Becker County is all of our vouchers are assigned to somebody, but I believe, and maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong, Richard, twenty-seven vouchers, is that what we had? That are assigned to somebody but don't, there, there's no housing available.
Right.
For them.
I can't remember what it's.
Yeah, it was, it was a pretty high amount, at any rate, that, you know, and they have, I think it's sixty days to find housing, and if they can't find housing, they get put back to the, um, bottom of the list, so that's just one thing that, um, shows our need really for affordable housing in Becker County, cause we don't have any. Um, also met with, our, our housing subcommittee also met, we met with the Minnesota Housing Program to go over some different funding programs that are coming up. Uh, West Central Regional Juvenile Center, Becker County's trending down, um, with our, um, numbers, so the new rates get set in July, so we'll find out what that means. We also went over the reporting data, they have to, because of new state statute last year, they have to report, um, keep a report and submit it to the state for any time they separate, uh, juvenile from, from the rest of, they, any time they put them in the room, so. He went over all of that reporting data and how it's, um, how it's, they have to, there's only three reasons why they can be separated, um, so that was interesting, and the state was happy with that data that they reported. Then we also talked about, they, they want to remodel the detox program, which we did have something in our consent agenda also, but one thing that they are finding that there's a huge need for is for a girls' program currently, they have a boys' program in, um, West Central that allows for them, for the juvenile males to go to work and come back. Um, they don't have a program like that for girls, so they're hoping to remodel their detox program to expand that for girls, which will fulfill a huge need in our, um, region. And then they, we also approved to purchase body worn cameras for their staff, because that's, um, they, they feel like that could, um, you know, decrease some number of false reports and, and that, so we did approve of that. Uh, had crowing one watershed, one plan, we reviewed and approved the goals, we also discussed, um, what type of watershed we wanted, whether we wanted a collaboration or a joint powers. Uh, originally, the plan was to bring it back for, to discuss at the board, and then we would, um, vote on it in May, but then all the other counties there really did not want a joint power, so we, um, went with a, a collaboration, if we feel strongly about something else, we can.
Or collaborations, what we've done on all the rest of them.
Yeah, that's what Brian had said, that, that that's what all the rest of them are, so if you want to review the goals, they are on the Hubbard County Soil and Water website. Uh, also had Mahouby, Mahouby's continuing to look for a property for the Veterans Tiny Home, the grant was approved that they could go to a new locate, location. Um, they would really like for it to be in Becker County, cause it's, it's really in a, Becker County is in a good spot for where their services are and where other services are. So if you have any idea of any property for sale that would be a good fit for that, um, let me know and I can let Liz know. Then I had Cornerstone, they're hoping to open their restaurant beginning of June with a soft opening end of May, and then we had our White Earth Committee, um, where we talked a lot about, we visited with the lobbyist, the session ends on May twentieth. There are still, uh, a couple of things in bills, one was the First Right of Refusal, and the second is, um, this, this one is only in the Senate, it's not in the House, that they want the DNR Commission to assess ways to work with tribes on land transfer with a report by February first twenty-five, that's not in the House bill, so, um, that's. But not sure how that would, would go, there was really a lot of question at that time, how the rest of the session was going to be, um, but we did talk about writing the letter, which, again, is, was in the consent gen, agenda, so that we could get that to the lobbyist, so he could go around. At this time, the administration is still against any of the land transfer, it's highly unlikely that that would happen anymore this year, but you never know until it's done.
That's right, and we did talk about Iraa a little bit, um, I still would like to see the three counties have, have one person doing some of the stuff that's still not getting done. And, and we, I don't, I don't know how we go about that, they thought maybe a private group, um, so that we weren't, you know, but there's just a lot of stuff that's not getting done that could be done, um.
Yeah, we're gonna meet again after the session, I think we're set to meet at the beginning of June to kinda come up with, with a plan, we did talk a lot about the, um, the water stuff, which isn't really land-related, but, you know, there's.
With, um, with lawsuit that, or the challenge that RDO is putting out for some of the restrictions that tribe is, is there a way that the, the county board can, um, file, what's the word, what's the word that we're to? There's a companion letter that we could offer, is there, I don't know if we are authorized to do that, or to just.
Well, we have the resolution.
Right, but isn't there a, what's the word, what's the word I'm looking for, a formal, it's, it's, costs some money, except, cause AMC did it with, when we did, when we were sued, being sued by the state auditor, um.
I forget the term.
I think it was injunctions.
It's a, it's a term that, that we, we, we agree with this and we're supporting, we're supporting of the language of, of the, of the lawsuit. I can't remember, there's a term for it, and it costs, it costs, um, I mean, it's, it costs money, you have to, you have to formally do some, but I don't know if it's appropriate or for a county to do that on a private, private, but, I mean, I, I would like to look into that a little bit, to see if there's any, any other support that we can, to, to protect their landowners from, in my opinion, to protect them from overstepping of, of the tribe's. Tribal authority.
We've been pretty quiet about that, but that is just as important as this tax force fitted land, that, those farmers, they're looking at, at the farms on the reservation, but also five miles out.
It's, it's a, um.
And.
It's a burden, and, I mean, honestly, it's a, if anyone's looking to purchase land, if you're looking, you know, if you're, if you're a farmer or an investor looking to buy land and you are, if you have two parcels, one inside the reservation, one outside, you, the one outside is more valuable than inside because of the, the turmoil and, and, so, I mean, we're, we're talking a reduction in value from.
Absolutely.
Property owners.
Even in that five-mile limit.
Yes.
And, you know, some of that land out there, Barry, correct me if I'm wrong, you know, by hand, it was, some of it was seven thousand an acre, some were nine.
There was just a sale, I think it was in Atlanta Township that went reportedly ten thousand, but it wasn't, maybe that was terrible acres, so maybe in that nine to ten thousand dollar an acre range.
So, and I, cause I know a farmer who just bought, who just paid seven thousand, which is unbelievable to me. Uh, but now if something, if he's gonna have trouble, you know, running his operation because of, you know, restrictions, it's, it's gonna, it's, could be really hard on, on people, and I don't know, we talked about it, whether the county should be involved in this, or, but, and maybe if we could get, um, you know, some private people to do some of this stuff. Uh, it's in everybody's interest.
I, I don't know, I don't know what, I don't think a county can, I don't, I don't know how you, you can't, you have to be careful how you.
Right, and that's what we're worried about.
I think you wanna be transparent, and, I mean, if we're in opposition, I don't have a problem saying we're in opposition, so.
No, I don't have a problem with that either, um, it was just some, they had some questions about what, what kinda trouble we could get into if we did get involved. get into if we did get involved in some of this stuff. If I wanted to hire somebody between the three counties to represent us, and then we had discussion on that, that that could be a problem, so...
I think, you know, any of those discussions, we want to bring in MCIT to make sure that we're moving forward in the proper direction to it. But, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, because I, I think there's some misinformation out there too, though, because the tribe's request in legislation is the first right of refusal on the land. Now, there's people out there that think this is on all land, this is just tax forfeit or state owned land. This is not privately owned land, is that stuff?
Yep. And there, there is a lot of question about that, too. One of the things the lobbyist said is, why there's a lot of people not supportive of it, is what if one parcel of it is on the reservation and, or one acre of a hundred acre parcel is on the reservation, but ninety-nine is OAK, well then, does that include the whole parcel, or just that one acre? So I mean, it's, there, there's just, again, a lot of unanswered, unanswered questions that we don't know, you know, before we pass something.
But it looks like we're gonna slide through this, this session, but we do need to get ready.
For the upcoming one.
Yeah, I think, I think you hire, I mean, I think, I think I suggested maybe hire from that group, the three counties, a publicist, or not a publicist, but a public relations person that, that can get factual information out and saying, you know, what, what, what harm this would do and what, what, you know, because there's, there's lots of misinformation out there. I mean, just this case, I mean, and I want to ease some people's, you know, I mean, it's, it's not good, but it's not, if you have private property there, you can still sell to anyone you want with private, as, as this language is. I mean, of course, with any language that changes legislation, it's a stepping stone to the next piece of change, next change that you want. That's just like, you know, any other, any other group that wants, a special interest group that wants something up here, they go for this step, and then they go for this step and this step. So whatever that ultimate goal would be is...
Well, that's why we talked about social media, because it, it is so important, everybody's on it.
Yeah.
And we, we need to get somebody to put real information on there. And again, we talked about who that person should be.
An example of one of the things we talked about was, in our meeting, it was said that the Sportsman's Alliance was in support of it. And then one of the commissioners had a, I think it was from Clearwater, had a letter saying, "No, we're not in support of it." So I mean, that's...
They were actually opposing it.
Yeah. That's that information that we want to make sure is...
Where AMC is, is a neutral stand, but they were said that they support it. Well, AMC does not support it. They don't have a, they don't have a position on it, because they would have to have a state meeting to, and there would certainly not be support of it statewide.
Let's go through the old annual conference and come up with a membership. So, have anything else?
Yep, that's it.
Barry?
Um, yes. I just lost my train of thought on that, but anyway, we had, I had a couple watershed meetings with Wild Rice and, and the Buffalo Red, and that was basically just to do the CRP incentives plots, and that's funding coming from Bowser. So that's, with Wild Rice, that's a, basically a first come, first served. It's an amount of thirty thousand dollars, and it's a hundred dollars an acre for, for, and there's criteria that get you, that point you up to get, to get this incentive. It's a one-time payment on CRP acres. They think that will go up to one hundred thousand dollars on both, and this is a Bowser funded, coming back, so there's some incentives to, to go into the CRP. Back to the Sheriff's Committee, we did also authorize, they had a bunch of bikes, and we will put them on some, we were gonna donate them to some different charity or let them take care of it, because there were a lot of bikes, and you know, they're just not, they're not real valuable, but we just wanted to make it a public, give it to the public somehow, back to the public. So the snowmobile, new snowmobile. I do have, if you did want to look at, oh, this is Dunton Locks, if anyone wanted to see where the Dunton Locks building was going to go, that's where that was gonna go. And this is the, possible for the sheriffs, if anyone wants to look at some of the sheriff's drawings that they had. Then Richard and I had NRM. We've actually talked about quite a few things on here already. We're looking at the tram, tram to get that going, and looking at a couple docks, touch base on the Toad Mountain. We, in the consent agenda, we gave some money, it's a less amount this year to the North Country Trail, and there's a couple of special uses out on Dunton Locks for, and it's, it's amazing how many events go on out there. Everything else is on the agenda, I think. There was a request to go on some tax forfeit land to reclaim personal property, and we said that, get as much out of there as we can, because we, the less we have to clean up, the better.
I want to mention, Barry, for an NRM, that Chuck Church was here, and they had a camera out there for thirteen days, and they had a hundred and twenty-eight people come through there.
That was on different sites, and that was from Hank Ludkey.
Yeah.
Did that over by Frazee, so it's, it's very well, it's, it's more used than we think, but maybe it's just people running on the highway, just running back to use the porta potty, back to, I don't know.
He did have better numbers last year, remember? He had his own counter out there, and the numbers were really up there. He doesn't have, they don't have that out there this year.
No, and Chuck, Chuck's done a wonderful job, and I'll thank him for his support on that and, and his work, and those, you know, again, these are, Becker County has so many volunteer hours, whether it's up at Tamarack, whether it's the North Country Trail, or the snowmobile clubs, or the library. I mean, our volunteerism in Becker County is amazing. We have such a great community, so...
And, and he's in very good shape for his age, and his, he's, his heart's really in this job. He's, I couldn't see any, any, it's a very good investment for us, is the way I feel about it, but...
The only other thing, Rough Lake Township wants to put a, put their dumpsters on our, on property, and we said, yeah, we don't have any problem with that, and they were gonna look at another pickup through, if one of the other agencies had a pickup, they're gonna look at, if they could get that pickup transfer to NRM. I think that was, touched on the watersheds, think that's it.
I had quite a few, but I'm, go through them fairly quick. A lot of them, like Dave said, we spent too much time together last week or two. Pelican River Watershed, the new engineers and attorney that the watersheders hired were laying out a procedure for the rule revision, which they hope they have done before the end of the year, and we are working on that MOU with Corbin, Pelican River Watershed and Becker County, and hopefully we'll get something, taking care of that. We did have a ordinance review committee, and basically what we got accomplished there is we kind of somewhat determined what a retaining wall is, what height and where it's on. And granted, there are some instances that retaining walls are good, if they're engineered right, and they can actually help or run off, so...
What are we favoring now, rock retaining walls, or actually, which, which one do we like? I can't remember.
Well, not, not the railroad ties.
No. No, but are we more favorable to regular aesthetically...
Versus the landscape block. Not saying landscape block can't be used, and they had some examples where they're set back some horizontal distance from their brother, and how they work. Retaining walls back by a walkout basement and stuff, there's still, it's always the other short impacts on, so...
Where are we with the ordinances for the RBOs? I know Otter Tail just passed one, May seventh.
I've read that.
And it sounded like a pretty reasonable...
This was Kyle, a little bit on that, and right now you need a permit, but then, starting September, there's a lot of inspection that they have to do with sewers and public health and all that, so...
You know, I, I think, you know, the real concerns are the neighbors having problems, and I think that Otter Tail's addressed that, and I think it's kind of the same discussion we had earlier on. And the second thing is, how you size it for, I mean, how you size it for the septic, you know, the septic's there, so you have to size the occupancy for the septic system. And you can't have, I mean, because a lot of these are, you know, they're advertising, you know, you know, eight in the main house, and we got a bunkhouse for another ten, you know, it's like, well, you know, that, that's where you're getting a little extreme, unless, I mean, I'm thinking this is just a little cabin with a garage, you know, that, so those, those are the ones you start to tend to worry about on a fifty-foot lot and, and...
According to Kyle, we still have somewhat in place that, and I referenced a two-bedroom. He says the max people you could have there, I thought he said it was six or seven in that setting, and only one rental on a property. Somebody'd have a guest house, you know, rent that out, too, because Epperton.
Right.
So we do have some regulations, but I'm not saying it needs to be brought up.
But I thought that was one of the top things that we are gonna get out of this.
I think we are looking at it.
Comprehensive planning.
I think, I just think our, we have to finish the land use stuff before we...
But that was the, that was the first step that was supposed to be done, so we had that up in, for this season. That was supposed to be, that's supposed to be done in May.
Yeah. Well, I agree, we need to tighten up those VRBOs and, there's a lot of concern on where you get investors out of the city's area coming up, and they'll pay whatever for a property and then turn around VRBO it.
And if it's done correctly and properly, and, and I think there's, I don't think that's a big, I don't think that's a big problem, but when it's done, when there's, when you, when you're causing ill effects on your neighbors, then it's, then it's a concern. I mean, you want to, it's a fine line there. Depending, if you have a good owner, it's gonna be fine, if you have a bad owner, it's...
Yeah, it's all about management. We've been talking about this, you know, because I've been getting a lot of phone calls from the little corner of the area, you know, and so, and that's same with campgrounds. It's all, really all about management, and it is a fine line, Barry, I don't know how you get it, but, you know, if, if, if we give a conditional use for permit, and we can watch it, and we can make sure that there, the management is there, the oversight is there...
I think, like Otter Tail had the three-strike rule, and I think that's appropriate, and I think there's an appeals process, so if they can, I mean, because if you have a neighbor fighting you and everything, you know, it could be war, but if, so if they get the three strikes, then you can appeal it to a board, you know, the board, and say, you know, while there was three strikes, they are, they are petty, and it was a, you know, you can't have these petty neighborly things that aren't, you know, but I think there should be timelines on hours, you know, you can't be, and I think that's the big thing, hours and nights.
Well, Otter Tail had a quiet zone, was from eight to ten, or...
Ten at night to...
Ten at night to eight in the morning, yeah. No, we'll just have to keep working on that and make sure we, our consultant will move forward on that.
Yeah, I think we have a meeting after our next board meeting.
So we can question them where...
Yeah. And we meet with them again tomorrow, I think, but...
Sounds good. Airport bids, I think we're at for the taxiway, that's Mill and Overlay, paving for that new hangar. Next meeting, we'll be bringing forward financing package for the city and the county to more or less back the bond, but right now, hangar rental should be paying for, for the payments. Wantigan, Wantigan Park, quick there, there was a virtual meeting, but I did re-clarify what funding Becker County would be providing and other smart funds, because there, Steph from Frazee was explaining a little bit different than I, Steph, than I said, this is the procedure, once the plan is done and is submitted for, get on the budget approval in December, and be listed as a project and move forward. And that's mainly on the Justice Street, Main Street going in, not anything within the parks.
That's for the infrastructure?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Prairie Lakes Misses, solid waste. Our repairs were completed on the north unit, and the good thing is over a hundred thousand dollars less than their estimate. So it goes to four hundred thousand, about fifty thousand of its materials, the rest was labor, so very high labor, intense rebuilding also. Stan Tech Engineering's updated, is on the ash and moving forward to get approval to be, possibly use that in some road base, which I think will be a good use for it. A lot of counties are, Polk County...
You know, I hear, I hear that, John. What is the ash taken, does it, is it in place of something, or is it just added, does it add strength?
Added to it, it's, it's like adding probably a binder and you might...
Add strength, then?
And then it won't possibly be able to lessen, say, the class five material, the base material, or anything, so they're, they're working on a kind of a test design for it, so we have some ideas, but Polk County has used it quite a bit, and I don't know, it's Blue Earth, or one of the counties down south has been using it, too, so hasn't been any adverse effect, so...
Have you heard any, any, have they, has Jim done any studies or any, looked at that, that soy based up by Callaway, that stretch of road?
Fourteen, I haven't been through there to look at it.
I mean, is there, is there any noticeable...
Oh...
Well, probably should have, probably have Jim just say, give a, give his opinion on whether that, because it costs more money, so...
Asked him today, when he said, just come back with something. On Prairie Lakes, did sign a letter of support for Becker County and Pine for the recycling grounds, so I know, one of the, Bill Sterns was brought up, well, that just adds another one trying to get money, because Prairie Lakes has got one in there, too. And I think it was Lee Rognes, Commissioner of Otter Tail, he says, "Who cares if one of us gets it up here?"
Bill.
So, he's, he's back. He's missed quite a few of the meetings, because his wife, I think, is still in the home out in Watford City or something. He fell and got hurt out there, and he's had a struggle, so he's back, so it's good. And then highway, most of the stuff's on the agenda for today.
Yeah, except for we are, we are, we have eight applicants for one job out there, so...
We had a resignation, and we got...
Yeah, so things are changing with employees.
Yeah, four of them were very well qualified, I heard, so...
That's good.
And David and I did have several negotiations, discussed later today.
Here's some trail, some info from the trail.
Just on environmental, we talked about, we're trying to do more mattress recycling, so we're looking at maybe getting mattresses brought in from, from other areas. And then we're looking at doing organics, which is a big deal. You know, there's a lot of waste from, oh, central market, different places like that, so, and that's not, it's not supposed to be a real expensive treatment system, so, but that's all I had.
Mr. Chair, just one other thing, there's an event coming at Frazee, the Lorton Lakes Chapter is, has a guided chapter hike, leave Lions Park at two, that's May eleventh, five o'clock social, five-thirty business meeting, auction and dinner, so if anyone's interested. I know Chuck invited us to...
Yeah.
To go, so...
Sounds good. Any appointments? We will be having Pelican River Watershed next meeting, be up real quick, so. Moving on, County Administrator.
Yes, do you want to take the individuals that are here? Would you like to...
Yes, we've got West Central, or First, Minnesota DNR, why didn't you come up?
Is that me?
Morning, Commissioner.
Morning. Rob Baden, Area Wildlife Manager here for the Minnesota DNR Wildlife. In your packet, you should have gotten a map and then some tax information for a parcel of land we're looking at acquiring from the city development authority, so I'm just here to seek a resolution, if that's favorable for you guys. A little bit of background on this property, it was part of the old industrial park, it's pretty much all swamp ground, except for a couple little islands of oak. You know, recreation really wouldn't change out there. I mean, people use that for hiking, walking their dogs, you know, bird watching, you know, a little bit of recreation out there. We just did a big project on the, with the race, with the Pelican River Watershed District, that road build and the, and the fishing up, out there for fish patches and stuff, so I guess I kind of looked at it as a win-win with the, with the city. You know, it's not, largely not taxed property, because, because it's by the city, and this would allow for some pill payments, so it'd actually be a net increase in taxes here for the county and city. But yeah, funding for this, if you recall, a couple of years ago, Chair, we had that large donation by the Bruce Schwartz Estate on the south side of town, and he donated quite a bit of money there to be spent in the local community, and I kind of thought this was a good project, maybe to put that towards, you know, buying some additional land for out to recreation here in the... Um, you know, buying some additional land for out to recreation here in the, in the local area, so. That's kind of my pitch. Any, any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them. Yeah, the map's up there.
Being the county ditch comes down through there, is in Watershed, Pelican River is okay with this?
Yep, yep, yep. Tara and, you know, this was, you know, you know, definitely part of the, kind of the thought process long-term.
Won't obstruct their.
They'll still maintain the ditch, they'll still, um, operate the structure with our, you know, cooperation there too, so.
So you need, uh, okay on this resolution or proposal, state land acquisition from us?
Correct. I sent one to Kerry if that's possible, if, you know, if, if the board so chooses.
Yeah. Which is the board?
I'm, I think it's reasonable, it's mostly, mostly, um.
Lowland swamp.
Yeah, pretty hard to argue. It's, you know, it's, it's a good use for it, so.
There is a snowmobile trail, and I know the snowmobile club has been interested, and I've talked to them multiple times. And as of right now, we're going to keep the snowmobile trail as it is. And then we're looking at potentially, um, you can kind of see that Highline Corridor that goes through the existing WMA there to the east. We have some issues to, with federal aid reimbursement, but we're, we've talked about rerouting the trail through that kind of corridor. Which would kind of help bypass the city a little bit and get it over to the existing segment over there on Totlin Road. Um, you know, this, I know the city has some issues with the soccer tra, soccer fields and stuff like that coming into town, so. I think that would be a win-win for the snowmobile club too. It's just, um, we got some hurdles to, to go over if we, if we rerouted that trail through there, but that's a thought long-term.
Yeah, the motion to approve the sale?
Is there a resolution number or just the?
No, just, there's no reason.
It's a.
It's, yeah, it was just a draft that was placed in here.
The one we have in our packet?
I'll make a motion to, to.
I don't think there's a number though.
I don't know, approve or, or approve of the, approve of the Minnesota DNR, um, state land acquisition?
I'll second that.
For the.
Barry, second my hearing, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Carry.
Thank you. Are you familiar with, is that a state, um, is the one south of Audubon that Pheasants Forever bought, is that going to state?
No, Fish and Wildlife Service.
That's going to Fish and Wildlife.
You're talking, uh, lane.
Yeah, I think we got, did you get notice in the mail?
The Skim Property, South of.
Yeah, yeah.
A little vet, vet.
It's adjoining other Fish and Wildlife land? And I've said this before, I would prefer, I don't know why the state, why state legacy funds paid to buy land that go to federal government. I would rather have it, I would rather have like state legacy funds go and at least go to, back to state land. I think the state, I mean, in their, I mean, worse, in the event of. You know, state poli, I mean, I think state money should go to state land. I don't think state money should go to buy federal land. And I think the state can change their, I mean, if they need this land or need, it'd be easier to work with state to do something than it would be the federal government on these, so. I seriously would, and I've said this many times, but. Legacy funds should be spent on state for state governments, not federal, but that's my two cents worth.
Good, appreciate it. No, I mean, we, we haven't, um, here in Becker County, we haven't, I haven't been here in what, a number of years it's been. We haven't acquired much land here locally in the county in quite a few years, and land prices are, are high and, and, you know, just funding is. You know, with Lassard, it, it can be challenging at times, but, uh, you know, this was kind of a, uh. I guess a perfect storm maybe of, you know, some private, you know, that, that, that donation that Mr. Schwartz left in his estate, and I think. Just felt it was a good use of it.
Well, I think there's lots of parcels that are, I mean, especially on these WMAs, I'm, I think it's important to get. Parcels of every lake non-development, and then it gives people, I mean, gives, it, it has multiple benefits. Not only just lake quality, but it gets those people that don't own property a place to kind of, like I referenced Big Corman. There's an area now, people go on the lake, go to that area and they can just anchor and, you know, they're not bothering the land, the homeowners, because it's state land, so they have. You can be there and not, um, not affect, negatively affect others either, so.
Anything else from us?
No, I appreciate it, and I guess if, if other questions, you know, DNR stuff, if you guys want to have me back here when we have more time, by all means, reach out. I'm always available to answer you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
West Central. Familiar faces?
We're back. I'm going to let Greg start since I'm delivering important.
Well, Mr. Chair and members of the commission, thanks again for the opportunity to visit again with you this year. Uh, this is our annual visit and really, essentially, we just want to come here and update the Becker County Board on. Kind of what's been going on with West Central Initiative and specifically our work across Becker County and the communities within Becker County. Um, my name is Greg Wagner. I'm the Director of Business and Economic Development. And so with that role, I oversee our economic development planning work as well as our business development. I used to say lending, uh, in reference to the business development, but it is, uh, it's always been more than that, but it lately it's been that much more. And, uh, part of my update, I'll kind of explain why that is, but related to economic development. And we had arrived early enough to hear that, uh, like, pretty much all counties across the state, and I'd say probably across the nation. Housing is a, a big challenge. Um, that impacts economic development, that impacts workforce. It, it really is a, a main factor in, in all those challenges. And so, um, every year, West Central Initiative is part of our, our role in economic development for the, the nine county region. Is we evaluate, uh, priorities that we want to focus on. And there's kind of two levels of our priorities. We work with communities to identify things that they want to work on as individual communities. And then we take a regional approach and a regional perspective on additional work. And, um, through that, our, we develop a, a five-year plan and then update that annually. It's called the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. Uh, it's basically just a, a planning document that's a resource. But, uh, we've identified three priority areas. Um, one is circular agriculture, which is essentially supporting, um, ag practices across, across the region. Not only kind of the larger farms, but also the local foods and installing local growers and creating more opportunities for, uh, local foods in, in markets. Uh, also looking at, uh, infrastructure, obviously a big topic at most county boards and most city council meetings. But, uh, replacement and, and of, uh, existing infrastructure helps communities be strong, stable and, and grow and encourage, uh, economic development. And then finally, uh, kind of something we're stepping into that's not entirely new, but, uh, we're evaluating what role we should play, and that's in housing. And we could probably talk for hours and hours about where we see our role in housing. Uh, initially, it's, uh, we're working to help communities, uh, fund and put together data for housing studies, which helps, uh, open up them for, for funding. And then we're also, uh, evaluating, you know, what we should do. Uh, is there a, a space and a place or a, a need for us to look at, uh, becoming a funding mechanism to encourage housing? Uh, and that, that's going to be a long conversation, because there's a lot of programs out there and we don't like to duplicate and be redundant, but so we. We need to identify the gaps of, uh, housing financing and, and maybe there'll be a role for us. Uh, and then of course workforce, and that all kind of rolls into, uh, so we haven't last focused on workforce. We've done, uh, and focused on workforce for, uh, you know, since our inception. That was one of the main reasons we were created back in nineteen eighty-six. But, uh, that, you know, workforce and housing kind of are, are playing into each other. And then on, on the lending side, uh, or the business development side, so traditionally, we've, we've provided loans to businesses in, in our communities. Um, and, and this last year, uh, you know, the, the loan activity has been quiet. Uh, banks, I'm sure are, well, I know they're feeling that too, the interest rate environment, uh, is really kind of doing its intention and slowing down the economy. But we did close three loans in, uh, in Becker County this year, um, since our last fiscal year, which was, uh, started July first. And that was a, a acquisition of an existing, uh, family group, a, a group home and a family childcare. And then, uh, spray foam insulation expansion, so. There are still business expansions, startups and acquisitions going on, just the, the activity has slowed a little bit. And then other work we've done with supporting businesses is you have probably heard, uh, of the Main Street Revitalization Program. That was funded by the state legislature a couple of years ago. Uh, the Highway ten corridor was one of our identified project areas. And so through that, we've provided, uh, funding through, uh, for Becker County businesses along the Highway ten corridor. Four specifically have been funded in, uh, in Detroit Lakes here. And then, uh, we have projects in Audubon and Lake Park that we're still working on, getting all the project submission information and the grant agreements. So, um, that's been, uh, over a million dollar investment along the Highway ten corridor, uh, including, of course, Becker County. And then, uh, finally, my last piece before I'll turn it over to Rebecca is, uh, we just launched on May first, so. Six days ago, seven days ago, um, the, the Promise Act Grant Program, which again was, uh, another program funded by the state legislature. And we've partnered with the state since COVID on delivering programs to support businesses in our, our nine counties. And, uh, the Promise Act Grant Program is a competitive grant program, uh, for a two-year cycle, a million dollars each year, a little over a million dollars each year. Where businesses, uh, will apply to West Central and then we'll select, uh, which businesses receive a ten thousand, twenty-five thousand or fifty thousand dollar grant. For just operating expenses. And, uh, we've had a swift uptake in interest already. Um, I think we're at forty-three applications completed and submitted thus far, and there's about another two hundred and fifty that we can see are, are being worked on. People apply online through our website, uh, and so we'll be hosting an informational webinar on that program, actually on Friday. So I, I was told that there's ninety-four people already registered for that. And I've seen definitely Becker County businesses already submitting, uh, applications as part of the, the Promise Act. So just another example of how, uh, we can partner and deliver services, uh, from other entities and, and help our, our region's communities, so. If there's questions, maybe we save those to the very end, or I can turn it over to Rebecca now.
Is that okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Well, first of all, I want to thank you for having us here in May. Greg was telling me on the way here that he and Tom McSperrin, my predecessor, used to come during WeFest. So we had no traffic, we parked right in front of the building, so, uh, thank you for that. But also thank you for your past and ongoing support. And as you know, we've taken a new strategy here. We're not here to make the ask, but to update you on all of the activity that we have going on in your county. So that we can sort of like, uh, prove to you the return on the investment you've made in us. And so I'm just assuming we'll send a follow-up letter about continued support. Would that go to your administrative assistant and, okay, thank you. So, uh, a lot of activity here in the last year, in some of your conversation between Commissioner Bearburg and Nelson. I noticed you mentioned volunteers. Uh, my work as the Director of Development, which is in fundraising and development, is to work with our development team. Through not only fundraising for West Central Initiative, so we can bring more funds into the region and redistribute them. But also to shepherd along all of the community funds that we host, which, uh, there are over two hundred. And several, several of them are in Becker County. In your packet on the right-hand side, there's a, I've written all over mine, but, uh, Becker County fact sheet that lists. Most of our, uh, community funds and someone mentioned, mentioned the important work of volunteers. These funds all have advisory committees and they are all populated by volunteers. Who bring more dollars into the work that they're doing and distribute their good work throughout your region. And the one that is not on here that was just added this year, which we're all very excited about. Is the Early Care and Development Foundation of Becker County, and I'm sure you're aware of this. Um, they're a very exuberant energetic group. They've been raising funds not only through government support, but individual support. So they can help subsidize some of the childcare, uh, gaps in financing in your county. And, uh, they sort of had, have set the stage, year the first county to do this. Pope County has followed by example, and they're making great progress, as are you, in some of the childcare issues. Our folks at West Central Initiative are doing a lot of work at the legislature. To help policy around childcare, because we know it's an issue all over the country, but especially in our state. So, um, I will leave this with your, with Peggy. Uh, it's a list of all of the funding that has rolled into your county through West Central Initiative. For a total of two million twenty-one dol, twenty-one thousand four hundred and eighty-four dollars. Of that, three hundred and seventy-eight thousand seven hundred and seventy all came from West Central Initiative, either through our grants or loans, loan programs. Um, Early Childhood Initiative, uh, redistributed sixteen thousand. The Deed Childcare Quality Improvement, thirty-five thousand. Discretionary Grants from our discretionary grant making thirty-seven thousand. Early Childhood Dental Initiative, six thousand. The Deed Main Street Revitalization Dollar, seventy-four thousand. We received an anonymous gift for the Frazee Cornerstone Capital Campaign of a hundred thousand dollars, which we passed through to them. We made a one thousand dollar grant for, uh, the fire station in Audubon. And so that's the kind of work that we're able to do, but the rest of that two million dollars all came from these community groups. That raise funds and redistribute for important projects in your region. So that's kind of our work in fundraising and development. I want to draw your attention to the left side of your packet. Uh, there's our annual report and also information about, as I mentioned, our development team does fundraising and development. We bring in funds from federal and state, uh, areas, but also from local community, individuals, counties and cities. And this year, we have a starter ripple campaign that has a goal of a million dollars to bring into the region and redistribute in the areas of. Thriving Kids Champions, our early childhood work. Um, we will also have available re-granting dollars for matching grants for these community funds, up to fifty thousand dollars. We have a regional climate action roadmap that we've been working on. And then you'll remember last year, we talked about our Rural Democracy Program, our Rural Leadership Development Initiative. Which has really hit the ground running. Last week, we had a program here called Going Loco, right here in Detroit Lakes, that was very well attended. So, and then towards the back of the book on page twenty-five, a list of our donors, and our goal is to double that this year. And then enjoy another sideline, a sideline campaign about building our endowment, so we have more discretionary funds to redistribute. So that's kind of a capsule of the work in fundraising and development that I hope you can see will be returned into your county. Because of all of the partners that we have.
How would one of your endowment funds getting the ma, get the matching grant opportunity?
So we'll, probably in August, we'll just announce how many dollars are available. Um, and that's something we want to continue to grow, so we're very good.
First come, first served then?
Uh, no, it'll be competitive. We'll have some, you know, like, what's the project? How are you going to achieve these goals? So this'll, this'll be the first time we've done this, so it's kind of a trial and error time for us.
So you, you said up to fifty thousand?
Yeah, that would be, that we could re-grant depending how many dollars are available in the pot. And also, Greg and I were talking about this on the way here. You'll remember that, uh, initiative foundations were started by the McKnight Foundation back in nineteen eighty-six. And because of their initiative, which is, you know your region better, you're the ones who should be redistributing those grants. We've also gained the attention of Otto Bremer Trust, so they've been giving us re-granting dollars. So a lot of this is sort of like in the melting pot right now, as we work with these other organizations. Just the same way Greg works with Deed and the Minnesota initiatives that they put down the pipeline.
I'm, I was, I've been on, I was one of the original members of Lake Park Audubon Legacy Fund, so, I mean, and I turned out, so I had to get off that board, but. Um, just curious on how, how we could, what project we could put together to try to, try to get some of that matching funds or a fundraiser or.
Right.
A specific project that you want to purchase something with, or?
I think you raise a really good question. Right now, WCI is just, well, not yet, but we've reviewed all of the Otto Bremer Trust proposals that we got, and we've recognized a great need in many areas because of that. We had over $4 million in requests, and we only had $350,000 to redistribute. Now with our own discretionary dollars, we're seeing the same pattern. So I think our conversation and staff meeting this week was, wow, I mean, there's a lot of need out there. Where are we meeting the gap, and where do we need to go to fill the gap? So it's kind of a process of learning what's needed out there. So I can't answer your question right now, Barry, but it's, excuse me, Commissioner Nelson.
No, that's fine.
But I think it's a really good question.
Then going back to the magic funds.
Matching funds?
No, the magic.
Promise Act.
Yeah, the Promise. Just, I had some thoughts on that. You know, the state put so much more money into housing this year, and to me, it was kind of, how do you even manage that? And I think they're adding 56 employees just for low-income housing. Are we, are we gonna, how do we, how do we, it would be my opinion that they should drop the money in like West Central Initiative and let them manage it and get it out in the public rather than hire their own employees? We already have staff that can probably manage grants and funding for it and get it on the ground rather than more employees. But could you just explain that again? And I had some questions on the, on your project there.
Sure. I can kind of explain the parameters of the Promise Act fund. So there's essentially $86 million statewide for the Promise Act. That will cover neighborhoods, specific neighborhoods identified in Minneapolis and St. Paul, and then greater Minnesota. There's five other sister initiative foundations across the state that cover all the counties of greater Minnesota, less the seven-county metro. And we all receive an allocation of grant dollars, and then we'll be later launching a loan program as well under the Promise Act loans. So my main focus right now is the Promise Act grants. And how that was structured is similarly during COVID, we did small business relief grants, COVID relief grants, and emergency loans. State dollars came to us on the ground. We aligned or created the programs to comply with the state legislation and the rules that they wanted, and then opened up the program for applications and made the selections, made sure that businesses were submitting proper documentation and all the grant agreements and distribute the funds. So it'll function a lot like that again, except there's an extra step where we have to collect and score all the applications. The Promise Act Grant Program, so it'll be, it's approximately $1.1 million. And so that could be anywhere from 110 grants at $10,000 or 20, $50,000 grants. We don't know. It's gonna be a mix. I'm guessing, I'm just guessing under the wind, it's, we'll probably see 50 grants that we get out.
And that's your whole region, not just?
That's all nine counties, yep. And the business qualifiers for this year, the business has to have top-line gross sales of $750,000 or less. So that's, those are really smaller businesses.
I thought you were gonna say more. I'm like, oof.
Yeah. No, this program is specifically targeted at very small businesses. And then have filed tax returns in 2021 and/or 2022. And then there's different parameters that will give them more points, like if they received a lot of COVID relief grant dollars during the pandemic, then they get less points. They're not ineligible, but they're not scored as highly for those dollars. And then, you know, veteran female-owned BIPOC-owned businesses get a preference as well. Businesses that have seen a loss of net income or a loss of gross sales in '21 to '22 also get higher preference. So we'll score those, and then based on their gross revenue in 2022 will determine the grant award amount. So $100,000 or small or less in gross revenue is a $10,000 grant. $101,000 to $350,000 is a $25,000 grant, and $350,000 of that $750,000 is a $50,000 grant for that business.
Up to?
Up to.
You don't have, I mean, say at $700,000, you don't have to award them?
They will get $50,000 in this round. We might retool that because we'll do this again next year. And there's been some discussion with the state on how we can prorate that a little more.
Yeah.
So, but initially, the kind of the group think came with those three breakdowns. So the applications open May 1st, close May 31st, and then we'll do our background review. My stretch goal, my hope, is that by the end of July, if not sooner, but by the end of July, we have all those recipients chosen, grant agreements in place, and dollars out.
Just last comment. You know, whenever we talk about West Central Initiative, it carries a lot of weight. So when you, you know, when you say there's a fund that you can, I mean, West Central, it's got a very, in my opinion, very high, it carries a lot of weight for donations. You know, you can, you trust them and you say, well, I know that's legitimate if West Central has, if West Central Initiative is part of that or is the funding mechanism. So congratulations on that because I think in my discussions with people, when they hear that, oh, no, West Central, okay, well, then it just adds a level of confidence in whatever program or discussion we're having, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Rebecca or Greg? Any questions for us?
Well, is there anything we should take back to the team? I mean, we listened in on a little bit of your report. Sounds like you've got a lot on your plate.
I think I'd be interested in if Becker County businesses, you know, just to let us know if there's, if any of those grants came back into Becker County, it'd be nice to know. And if there's anything this board could do to help our, the Becker County applicants to?
Just reach out to us, I guess.
Let them, let them know that it's available. I mean, yeah.
Our communications team, you know, you can't reach everybody all the time, but they are knocking it out of the ballpark. I mean, social media, newspapers, but there's always somebody who doesn't hear, get the information. That's part of our starter ripple campaign, too, is to help raise awareness, invite people. We're doing an event in Becker County on June 25th, location to be determined. But people say, yeah, I've heard of you before, but, oh, I know somebody who would have qualified for a grant with you. It's important to get that word out. So thank you for helping with that.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of businesses that I know. How, does it have to be right on Highway 10, like the corridor?
Yeah. The good news is, is the Main Street Revitalization Program is closed. So the businesses that are in the pipeline are the ones that we're working with. The Promise Act is all of Becker County.
Okay.
All nine counties, including the northern part of, or the southern part of White Earth on the northern part of Becker County. But any business within the confines of our nine-county service area is potentially eligible, barring the gross revenue and the tax returns. And so then the other big question I get, because some are reading our language and seeing that, oh, I got a pandemic grant, I'm not eligible. No, you are eligible. I've been getting that out and about. The other big question is, shoot, I started my business in 2023 and didn't file a tax return in 2023, can I still apply? Not this year, but next year. The startups of 2023 can apply for the Promise Act 2.0 or whatever you want to call it. So second year of the Promise Act.
Thank you.
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to say that we do have representation from Becker County on our board. Jackie Booboltz is our board president, and she's also on our EDD Economic Development District.
Economic Development District, Assistant Commissioner Bearburg.
That's right. So thank you.
Yeah, and Yurka, too, is on there. No.
Okay.
Oh, good. Okay. Wonderful.
Maybe your alternate.
Maybe, I think, I remember now, but I haven't gotten anything but when those meetings are.
Yeah. Great. Well, so thank you for all of that. That's another way that we can just sort of like keep each other informed. And also, we have Jacob MacArthur representing White Earth, so.
Anything else? No, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'll be in touch. Go on, Al.
Mr. Chair, I would like to request to take a break.
No, you talk too long.
I know I did.
Can I take a break now?
Uh. Can I have a walk?
I'll make the dress code.
Yeah.
Let's take five-minute break.
Perfect.
I'll be yours.
She's got, you ready now?
Yeah, we're ready.
All right. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. May 14th is a reminder for Detroit Lakes High Schoolers will be here on site, and the departments that they're interested in will be speaking to them, and we had a presentation on that earlier.
That'll be a short line for commissioners.
Yes. I don't think you were on the list, sorry.
I'm guessing not.
Yes, but they had interests that we will hone in on those departments that they're interested in, learning more about. May 21st, again, just wanting to put this on your radar, that will be the application process for the county administrator has closed, it closed on, I believe it was Sunday. And so the first review of applicants that they are putting together, DDA, you'll be reviewing those and determining which of those applicants will move on to the interview phase. We've talked about the We Committee just very briefly, but one thing I wanted to add to that is I was at a regional meeting on Friday afternoon with other county administrators. So I took the opportunity to take copies of that letter and distributed it to all that were there. And they asked lots of really great questions. Some were more familiar than others, but I certainly educated the group on Friday afternoon because I had the opportunity. Lastly, on my report, we are currently, as of yesterday, without a county assessor. So I am working on a support plan for the staff up there and working, just trying to figure out what that plan's gonna look like to move that department. They do need support up there. I've reached out and had conversations with Lisa Will, as well as doing some other contacts. Okay? Can you move on?
Yes.
All right. In your packet, you have a copy of two items. The policy on the dress code. This was discussed through the department head. I got a lot of input from department heads on, really, the direction with this is really to try to streamline. This really came through our negotiations and requests by them as well. And so I wrote the policy, again, with lots of input from lots of discussion with department heads, and we came up with more of a what's not acceptable and defining what business casual is. So all of this was included in your packet. Lots of discussion about, you know, how much do we want to streamline? We want all that.
Dave, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next we have a tubing permit for K and K tubing in Erie Township.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
My Erica, I'll second that. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And my final item.
I wasn't listening. I shut your mic off.
And my final item is resolution five twenty-four one A to establish an absentee ballot board for the June twenty-eighth and September twenty-fourth state primary and general elections.
Motion to approve one A.
I'll second.
Motion by Barry, second by Dave. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thanks, Mary.
Thanks, Mary.
You want a break now again?
I'm good.
Steve.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Board members.
Good morning, Steve.
We have one item that the board needs to act on, I'd like the board to act on, and an update on a grant. The first item, the docks for the tram. We'd like to be able to purchase two docks, one to put on either side of the tram. We left an open amount up to twelve thousand dollars because we'd like to, we're going to be putting out the tram this week, or I'm hoping this week, and based on that, we'll determine how long they have to be. But I'd like to work with Commissioner Okerson and actually get the layout and select the dock at that point and be allowed to spend up to twelve thousand dollars. Does anybody have any questions?
Motion to approve.
Yeah, you know, if you notice, we looked at five foot if they're, if you're going to be getting on and off pontoons, and we thought the five foot would be, I mean, we have, I mean, I use a five foot, and they just seem so much more, if you have a couple people trying to get by, they just seem so much better. But that's why we went five foot.
Excuse me, we tried to get a five-foot wide dock with more of a non-slip surface and then have a piece that sticks out a little bit on the end, L-shaped.
Then we want them to unload and load in, you know, in front of the tram and pass tram, not when they get up on the tram, because then we'd have to do other stuff. So the driver would stay in the boat, and their valves would unload at the dock. That's why it needs to be a little wider, too.
On the end, correct.
Yeah, there's, they're all different shapes and sizes, and accessories are all different, so.
Yeah, I mentioned to Steve yesterday, you know, Muskrat's, I like that one twenty-foot section, because that's going to get you out deep enough. And even Newman's, they possibly could build a twenty-foot section.
Correct.
We just need to do some checking, and that's why he said up to a dollar amount.
There's some docks, you know, and I've floated this idea for around for quite a while, that we have a kayak, a kayak boarding thing there, but I don't suppose that area would be suitable. You wouldn't want kayaks going in that same area. You'd probably want them more over towards the.
More towards, on Muskrat's, I'd be more towards park.
To the east, farthest east would be east of that parking lot.
Well, right now, the kayaks, when they come off south, they come up right by the tram, go in by the tram on Muskrat.
I'm thinking just, I'm thinking, what my vision was always having county-owned kayaks on a, on a rack there with life jackets for, for free public use, for, be nice for a kid, you know, gotta wear a life, you know, gotta wear a life jacket, but, you know, there, you can get, you can get cheaper versions of those kayaks that are almost indestructible for two hundred bucks, and sure you could get a stand built. But I don't think it would, I don't think they would, they're not a good marriage, that dock system for that, anyway. So I'll, I'll go along with what the recommendation has moved to authorize the purchase of two docks for up to twelve thousand dollars for the, Ed Dunn lots.
For the tram system.
For the tram system, noting that they will be also used for fishing, and maybe we, we mentioned a sign put up there that fisherman, please move, move out of the area while trams are. And allow Mr. Okerson to.
Motion by Barry.
I'll second.
Second by Richard. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The other item is that our staff got notified that we received up to a three hundred thousand dollar grant for the public, we applied for Public Land Survey System Monument Grant, and we received notification that we'll receive up to three hundred thousand. We haven't actually got official notification, so I don't know what the amount will be, but we'll definitely get something, so. That's good news, and I really would like to commend Mitch and the county surveyor on the work that they did on that. It's.
That's the one for the.
To remind you, at the section corners, we started on the east end in Green Valley Township, and then coming across to the west.
Sounds good.
Good, yeah, the state wants those.
Correct.
Wants those done.
Any questions on that?
No, let us know what the final figure's going to be.
We will. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Steve.
Sheriff.
Good morning.
Morning, Tom.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, I do have one correction on the sale of, instead of a 2014, it is a 2016 snowmobile. That's a misprint. So I'll start off with item number one. I'm looking for approval to sell a 2016 snowmobile, it's a Polaris five fifty fan-cooled, and purchase a 2025 Polaris six fifty. Grant funds, sale of the 2016 sled and budgeted funds will be used for the purchase of that.
Motion?
I'll make a motion to sell the 2016 snowmobile and purchase the 2025 snowmobile.
Motion by Dave, second.
I'll second.
My Erica. Further discussion?
Just to note, the snowmobile was on state contract?
That is correct, yes.
Pricing?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both? Carried.
And item number two, I'm looking for approval to purchase squad car equipment from Code Force Services. This will be for six squads, and it is within our budget.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the equipment for the six squads.
Motion by Dave.
Second.
Second by Barry.
And could we just add the dollar amount in there?
Oh, the dollar amount, approximate would be one, one, one twenty-three, zero four eight, point one one.
That is correct.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both? Carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, Todd.
Jim.
Jim, who is our engineer?
Four.
Who gave the engineer's estimate for that one?
Oh, Altig.
Thirty-nine percent under.
That's good.
It's a good way to be, under it.
Over it, anyway.
Yes, we got five items for your consideration for the Highway Department. First one is our bid award. This is for work in the Steve Frazee on our County Road thirty. Includes street work for the county and utility work, and some local street work for the city. The low bidder was R. Larson at one million, seven hundred ninety thousand, three hundred thirty-four dollars and thirty-three cents, which as you say, is thirty-nine percent below our engineer's estimate.
But it wasn't you?
No. Yeah, it was good bids, though. I mean, I think R. Larson's working in Frazee, I think they had some closeness, and they really went after this, to get this project.
But all the, all the bids were well under estimate.
Yep. And just for your information, as far as cost splits, I think we're at about nine hundred and thirteen thousand for our share, and the city has about eight hundred and seventy thousand, I think the split was somewhere around that.
I thought we got all the discount, and they had, they, we kept them at the same level. No? Crazy might not approve that. It's a good bid, good numbers.
Motion to approve one D.
Motion to approve one D.
Second.
By Richard.
Second.
Second by Barry. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next item, change order for construction services. Currently, we have a professional service contract with Altig, the city engineer in Frazee, they did our design work on the County Road thirty project. They're going to be doing the construction inspection, survey work, and contract administration, and we'd like to adjust that contract to, not to exceed a hundred and fifty thousand for their construction services. They pay on essentially their, their hours of work out there, because, and their rates are included with the, with the contract, so you could see those, but we'll be paying for their surveying work and inspection, and then they'll administer and make those payments to the contractor.
Would this be more of an amendment rather than change order? Or is it change order, the wordage?
Well, this is what, the way they worded it is a change order to their, the last agreement that we had with them.
It's a new service, I mean, it's a new job for them, basically, right?
Well, it's the same project, just adding additional services.
Okay.
Motion to approve one E.
I'll make a motion to approve one E. I'll second.
Motion by Richard, second by Dave. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both? Carried.
Next item for consideration is a resolution, let's see, and an agreement approval. This is a cooperative construction agreement between the county and the city of Frazee, just essentially defining the roles and obligations in this construction project, and who pays for what. City is paying for all their utility work and their work on their city streets, and we're paying for the reconstruction of the County Road thirty.
Pretty much similar to the one we had with City Decor Lakes.
Yep, very similar.
Motion to approve one N.
So moved.
Motion by Barry.
I'll second.
Second by Dave. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both? Carried.
Next item is the purchase request. We're looking to purchase some used, a piece of used equipment from MinDOT. It's a, it's a mastic melter, which is used for filling potholes and cracks. These can be larger potholes and cracks and, and repair roads. This is a reasonable price for the condition they're in. New, they cost around ninety thousand, this one is fifteen thousand, and then we are also trading a piece of equipment to knock another three thousand dollars off that MinDOT would like from us. That piece of equipment is used on our portable truck lifts to support, like wings and stuff. We do not use that anymore with our new in-floor lift, so it's just kind of useless to us now, so we get a little money for it, anyway.
Motion to approve the capital request.
I'll make a motion to approve it. I'll second.
Motion by Richard, second by David. Further discussion?
And then Jim also said that they get to go out there, and they have, what, they have a half a dozen of them or so, you get to go and pick the best ones.
I just a question, then, do you, do we need another motion to authorize sale of any other equipment, or will that come later?
It's.
Well, I suppose you can include that in the motion, that it includes.
Trade.
A trade.
The trade.
Monetary trade of equipment.
I'll, oh, so I second.
You seconded, Richard.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I'm good with that.
Trade of equipment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
In the motion, maybe be specific on what the trade value was, just, it was three thousand?
Three thousand.
Do we need to be specific of what it was?
I'd list it and just put the item.
Attachment for.
It's a beam.
You could just call it a lift attachment. All right. Final item is just a resolution to increase our fees on mailboxes. We adjust these on occasion as our material costs go up. We're not making money on these, our costs on materials are about ninety-five thousand, or ninety-five dollars, and we're adjusting our fee to one hundred dollars for the mailbox support system.
That's just the mailbox with the swing, swing?
Yeah.
Are they up to ninety-five dollars?
They're installed, so.
I know, are they up to ninety-five dollars to buy them?
They're the galvanized?
Those are galvanized, yep, includes the galvanized swings, and then the posts that attach, and you pound in and attach to it. Doesn't include the mailbox.
With inch, inch and a half pipe?
Yeah.
Now, they're a lot heavier than the ones you go to.
Oh, I got, I have one, it's, they're good, it's just.
Motion on one H.
I'll make a motion on one.
Richard.
Second.
Barry, second. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on the next item, as I understood it, Cody won't be present, too, but Commissioner Jepson was going to take the lead on that, is that your understanding?
Yep.
Okay, very good.
So at the last board meeting, we had, Becker County Early Child Development Foundation came and wanted the remaining of the funds, which is twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and six dollars. We did talk about that at the EDA, because there was discussion that, I believe it's the last year, that they may not come back, you know, that this was just a one-time funding. So what we had, kind of came up with was that if they could find the matching funds, because that was one thing that they had talked about, that we would approve the, up to twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and six, if they are able to find those matching funds. So that was what we, because we want to encourage them, we think it's a great program, we want to encourage them to be sustainable.
Was there any timeframe around that, or?
No.
Oh, okay.
So actually.
What do you want?
Just updating the.
Well, I think, I think we need to approve that, yep. The board needs to approve that we will, and I'll make that motion, that we approve a one-time payment up to twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and six with matching funds.
With the stipulation of matching funds?
Yep.
Okay.
Motion by Erica.
Second.
By Richard.
Oh, Richard. All right, got a couple of questions, then. I would like to put some timeline, I mean, I don't care if it's five years, it should have some deadline.
I felt, yeah, I thought it should have a timeline, too.
And the second thing is, if they raise part of it, can we pay it, and then if they raise the rest of it later, can we, so you said one-time payment. I'm, I'm just thinking that it should be payment, it can be two pa, I mean, I don't.
I think what we meant by one-time payment was this is, the twenty-four thousand is, like, won't be an ongoing.
They said they wouldn't come back if we.
Matching funds up to.
Matching funds, so, yeah, matching funds up to.
And then state the matching funds are outside Becker County funds? Does anything outside Becker County fund?
The matching funds?
Could be state, state funds, federal funds, local, you know, private.
Local private funds, yeah.
I think those are the, those are the things that probably should be in the motion, just make sure you're clear on outside Becker County funds to be matched, or to be matched with outside Becker County.
Yeah, it says demonstrate matching funds have been raised from other sources, and that funds are used for the same purpose as intended through the family childcare setup, startup grant.
Is that part of the motion? Is that?
Yep, I'm making it part of the motion.
Okay. You know, I'm just, it's got to be part of the, it's got to be part of the motion, and then the funds can be requested numerous times during, up to, within, I think you should put a year timeline on it, up to.
I think you should have a timeline on there as well.
Two years?
Two years.
Valid for two years.
Okay.
You okay with that? Further discussion? You got the motion?
I'll play it back. Really, it's, it's what, what Cody has written in.
The third paragraph.
Yeah, but instead of saying one, take the one-time payment out.
Yeah.
It's, it's not a one-time payment, it's a one-time.
Amount.
Amount.
It's a one-time distribution, or one, one-time commitment, one-time commitment up to.
Twenty-four seven.
Twenty-four, seven oh six.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both? Carried.
So, Mr. Chair, on the next item is the abatements, so I will speak about that if you'd like me to. In your packet, there's a list of abatements and adjustments for your review, and I'm requesting that, a motion and an approval for those adjustments to be made.
Motion to approve the adjustments?
Do you want the dollar amount, or just?
The dollar amount.
I'll make a motion to approve the abatements, the twenty-seven listed, I think they're twenty-seven listed abatements, for a total of twelve thousand, nine hundred, eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars.
I'll second.
Motion by Barry, second by Dave. Further discussion?
Just to note, probably, on the letterhead on this, it should probably state abatements. Because I was, when I went to it, I'm like, how does this, is this childcare? So I was, I'm a little slow at times, so, I was like.
Yes.
Little, little dialogue.
I would agree.
I would, I would, yeah, she'll think she's agreeing, you're a little slow.
I think, I think it's also only twenty-six.
Is that an insult?
You take out the one in the.
Okay, the listed, the listed.
The listed, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both? Carried. Look, Brian. County attorney.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners.
Morning, Brian. Morning, Brian.
Come forward today to re-bring forward my request, that was tabled a couple meetings ago, I believe, our last meeting, to again request one-time retention type pay for my two assistants that stayed, have helped me keep this office functioning during the exodus to the State Public Defender's Office. I did compile some statistics the board asked for, I stuck with criminal filing statistics, because they're the easiest to quantify, but I want the board to remember that we do a lot more than just criminal stuff, child protection, mental health commitments, guardianships, child support enforcement, so. Probably the most telling thing about these statistics, I would say, is if you go to the bottom of page two, the total open cases, I divided it by both three and four, because we do have four attorneys right now, but I want to be square with you that because of training and experience, the workload, criminal workload's being divided by three right now, for the most part. My newest attorney does not have any felony cases. So if you look at that number and compare it to what was a very busy 2022, you can see that we're averaging about twenty-five to thirty more felony cases per attorney. I also think it's important to note that these are cases that have actually been charged in the court system, there's also a percentage of cases that we review and do not charge, and that also takes time and effort. So those are the points I wanted to bring forward. If you know what, I did modify my request slightly, I brought the amount down slightly, and also simplified it to just have a one-time payment instead of a two-tiered, six-month type structure. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the board might have.
And Brian, you did include a payback if they would have an early service.
Yep.
Yeah, we haven't put the actual language, but obviously, I know that's important to the board, and I would want that in there as well.
And I, I think it's to point out that the case, that the trials haven't stopped, there haven't been, I mean, there's been no stoppage of court baits for, for the department, so make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Barry, second by Dave. To approve the retention bonuses for the two attorney, assistant attorneys. Further discussion?
I just want to thank you, Brian, and, and your attorneys for doing the work that you do, because it is very important work, and I, I just want to make sure that you know that we as a board do recognize that, and they do, do very important work, and I agree they are entirely overworked right now, so.
Thank you.
Yes, I agree with that.
Anything else? Not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both? Carried.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners.
Thanks, Brian.
Kyle. We're a little ahead.
Want to wait?
Three minutes.
We're ahead of schedule?
How'd that happen?
Well, you guys, you guys maybe take a quick break, I guess.
I suppose we could talk about the comprehensive plan update?
Yeah.
I don't have anything major there.
Wait, do we have a date set?
Twenty-first.
That's what I thought.
They should have, I mean, I guess what I do have for you is they will have a significant code update for you by then, but that's basically what they've been doing since the last time we spoke.
And is that in person? Five twenty-one? It's after our.
Yeah, it's a work session. It's a two-hour work session. Two hours? I thought it was, wasn't it?
That's what I thought.
Or maybe.
Three?
Three.
We won't get it done in two.
How about four?
I thought it was scheduled for two.
That's, that's, what time is it, what's after the board? Did we pick a time?
Tentatively, probably ten-thirty. I would like, I would like in zoning the packets, more, more data in the packets for, the board packets, or zoning issue, for the zoning, I just, I mean, we can, we can scroll through if we don't want to look at it, but if you could just throw that in the, in the board packet. Like the packet that we send out previously, you want that included? Would that help you? Yeah. Okay. Just. We have it already created as one, it's. Yeah. Simple to attach. Well, I think, yeah, we had it, I, I looked at the packets that were sent out earlier, so, but it'd be nice just to have it in the. Yeah. When it's electronic, it's no big deal, and. No problem. Most of them, we don't have to worry too much about. There's a few coming, you will have to.
Okay, Kyle. Hit a man.
Okay, Planning Commission recommendations from April twenty-fourth, the first is Four Sons requesting a final plot for ten lots. They changed the name from Rock Lake Estates to Four Sun Acres, and then the entrance road off of northeast Rock Lake Road got moved slightly to the northwest, just to avoid the right-of-way being close to an existing building, so the lot sizes changed very small for, I think, lots four, five, six, or something of that nature, but all still conforming and meeting the standard, I guess.
I'll make a motion to approve, or to follow the Planning Commission recommendation, which was to approve the final plot.
I'll second that. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carried.
Next is Two Pass Ranch requesting a change of zone from agricultural to commercial. There is a, they have a, all of their parcels combined, I'm guessing for tax reasons, but the area they're requesting is between County twenty-two and fifty-nine, so the bowl area, ranch house, saloon, that, that chunk of property.
Part of that is commercial already, isn't it?
Um, there is some.
See, we had to, we had to put some, we had to put some commercial out there for them to put highway signs out.
Yeah.
I think it was like a hundred and fifty feet back from fifty-nine.
Yeah.
There was a question about, you know, would this change what they can do there? So mass gathering is always conditional, whether this is agricultural or commercial, so this will not affect their conditional use permit. Now, could they have like a swap meet or something? They, they could do something of that nature, but they can't provide any more entertainment with just being commercial. Commercial was strictly for, you know, the lease or sale of buildings for providing a service or good.
The, the issue I have with zoning things commercial is that we don't have commercial, we don't have any commercial guidelines here at the county. Am I correct? For example, parking, and I'll tell you the example specific that I have a big problem with down in my area, is we zoned an area commercial, it was just a commercial office buildings, that got sold, and now it's a commercial restaurant, and there's no parking. I mean, there is like five parking spots, and they, now they overflow on the township road, they overshow into IDA, IDA public access. I get more complaints on that issue alone than just about anything else.[1779.41] So I don't, I'm not disagreeing, this isn't a commercial area. And I'm pretty sure I'd approve any commercial entity within those. But if we don't have, we need to get some guidelines for commercial. I mean, just a square footage, you require this much parking for every square foot of, every, every building. I mean, because we, if that, if we'd had just some simple language of commercial requirements, if you wanna put a commercial building up, we would, this one wouldn't have been, they wouldn't have been able to change that over because they wouldn't have adequate parking. So I, I don't like just blanket zone. I mean, unless it's right on the Highway ten quarter. But, you know, the city of Otten has very strict requirements for parking. I don't, and there are other, I mean, is, is the housing in there? Is, none of the, you know, you can't have housing in a commercial residence either. I mean, so if they're renting out something in one of those buildings, if they're renting out a house, for housing, wouldn't be allowed, correct?
Right.
Anyway, so I'm not supporting this just because we don't have any guidelines for it for some of the things that, now, they have a lot of room there, so you wouldn't think it would be a problem. But we're hoping, you know, this is a time when we're hoping it won't be a problem.
The parking is not an issue. Because that's pretty well regulated out there during their past.
If they sold off one acre parcel, which they could, it would still be zoned commercial. And they could, they could have a big issue with parking. I mean, I'm just saying, we should have, we should have something in our zoning that says if it's commercial, you're required to have this much parking for, for, per, per square foot.
We do have some parking requirements depending on what the use is. So if you have an issue down there, we can address that.
Well, we've, we've brought it forward fifty times and we haven't been able to address it.
Which, which?
Elmer's?
I've never been told about a parking problem there, honestly.
Well, somebody in your office has been told multiple times.
Because, I mean, when you were just saying that, I was trying to think of where the Lake Ida Access is. I don't even know where that is in proximity to them, but I don't remember it being in office. I just always remember.
It used to be Randy Iwerx.
And that, and that could have been before me, obviously. But depending on the use, we do have some parking requirements. And, I mean, we have a table. Just depends on what type of use it is. So like for...
So how would you, how would you, how would you enforce a parking restriction on a business changing use from commercial?
Well, they have to meet this standard. I mean, we'd have to, you'd have to say you, you either have this much parking or you'd require a variance or you can't do it, essentially. I mean, that's, would be my opinion. Like if we, so in here it says for like, the first one is for a service station. Each, the number of parking spaces required is four plus two for each service bay. Then you go to bowling alleys. You need five per each bowling lane. So if you don't have that, then I would say you can't operate your business. It's my opinion, I...
What, what does it say for? So business though, they don't have to come in and get a request. I mean, we don't request a business, if it's commercial and they change, change ownership and change what it is.
It's, it is a unique circumstance because they could, you're, you're right, a hundred percent right. If it's commercial, they could change from the office to Elmer's. But that use still has to meet this ordinance. So like Elmer's retail sales or a service establishment, you need one parking space for every two hundred square feet of buildable or total floor area. So I would say that if you don't have that, you would be in violation of this. That's, again, I mean, I could consult with Brian or something, but...
So we do have regulations in our...
Yes.
For commercial.
I mean, I can see the concern with enforcing it, I get that. But I think you could, I think...
Well, we're not gonna go back and, well, if the township came, I mean, they are, I shouldn't have mentioned the name because I don't want, I don't want any, I'm not looking for an action on any.
Right.
I mean, I'm just, an example is, I mean, it is a significant problem. And there is a homeowner there that, that, I mean, that was all the time.
Do you recall what, what the reason, reason, I know they discussed it, but I can't remember what the reasoning for...
Requesting.
Wanting to go commercial? I mean, I think, if I recall, they said that's what they're using it for now.
Right.
So...
I mean, and also you get a little, you get an increase in building height. You get a little more impervious surface coverage. And, I mean, also you would get the, the sign portion to the commercial.
The only building or is it structure?
What's that?
The height.
Uh, structure.
That stage area is probably over...
Probably, right now?
Yeah. It's up there quite a ways.
It might be up there in the commercial too. But we're in a condition to use that. I mean, that's a...
Motion to the board.
I'm, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the change of zoning from agriculture to commercial.
I'll second that. Further discussion? Hearing and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Carried.
The last recommendation from the Planning Commission is Lake Life Hospitality requesting a conditional use permit to construct a ten-foot fence. This was a perimeter fence down on county seventeen around the previous, what was it called, John? County seventeen bar. Then there was a small motel there, I believe.
Yeah, rentals.
So the way they explain this, and we had quite the discussion at the Planning Commission, but I guess for security and just their own personal stuff. So I mean, not to say that they maybe would take a dock from Pelican Lake Zorbas and bring it up here, I guess. But it was my understanding that someone like myself couldn't pay to put a dock there. And again, the reason they wanted it was security purposes. But that recommendation was to deny.
They could still put up, what, six foot?
Yes, six foot.
No, the...
And there was a lot of discussion, the neighbor was really, were his businesses. He felt like it would be not appropriate to have a ten-foot fence.
The campground right there, it doesn't have one owner and that's, I don't think it's six. It might be six foot high. So we're kinda managing that. Motion to the board.
I'll make a motion to follow the recommendation and, or concur to deny the conditional use permit to construct a ten-foot fence.
Motion by Erica. I'll second that. Further discussion? Hearing and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Lastly, Eric Zern requesting an extension of, of a permit for the feedlot. They have a two-year lifespan that, one, up in Spring Creek expires September sixth, twenty twenty-four. Eric would like an extension on that. The ordinance doesn't determine if you do grant it, what that extension is. So you'd have to identify that. But he is here to speak to it. If you have a question, he has some reasons why.
I think we all know the reasons why.
Yeah.
What did you want, a one-year?
I didn't know, I mean, I'd like to go the original two years if possible, but you let me start a whole. I mean, I have a list of reasons why.
I, I think we're all, I'm assuming we're all, we all know the issues. We don't, I, I, that, the hesitancy to invest any money in that at this time until some, I think, and if you were here earlier, RDO has filed a lawsuit to challenge the authority of the tribe on, on outside white earth. So that might give us more clarity how we're gonna move forward. But we, we also discussed if, if it's, if it's reasonable for our county to lend support to a, you know, something like that lawsuit against, to protect the citizens of the county's interest in. So if two years is what you're requesting, I'll make a motion to extend the two-year.
Motion by Barry to extend the...
Two-year extension of the permit. Motion by Barry, six, nine, four, two, one, five.
Motion by Barry, second by Richard. All in favor, further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carried.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Eric.
I just need a couple of signatures, Mr. Chair, before you close, if you would.
They're costly today.
They're costly today. You can get your stamp, you can get your stamp?
Oh, I'm gonna...
Hey, Carrie? I also need yours.
No, it'll be Carrie.
You want some?
Won't need any more.
I'll just the final plot I just approved. I use it, yeah, the pedal to the heart.
Should I go to the bathroom?
Well, if you hurry up, Richard.
Let's, uh, let's make motion and close.
Do I wait for that?
Yeah. Motion and close?
You can vote on your own. Motion and close meeting for...
You gotta read that.
Section, wait, wait, wait. For Minnesota Statute, section thirteen D, one, zero, three, sub one B. All in favor?
Aye.
Carried.